Mayor, we're live.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Holotus City Council. It's August 24th, 2023. The time is 7:00 PM. If you'll join me and rise, we'll have Pastor Josh Kelly come and give the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for all you've done for us, Lord, as we gather together tonight, Lord, we know that we can't do anything without your wisdom. And Lord, we call upon you and know that, Lord, government was certainly ordained and instructed by you, Father, and as we try to govern our city, Lord, to be able to make great decisions that impact the lives of our citizens, I pray you'd give great wisdom, Lord, that you would help us, Lord, to be able to push forward, to do right, Lord, give wisdom to the council. Or we pray that everything be done in decent and order, and we pray that you'd strengthen us in this great work that we have, Lord, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. At this time, we will have citizens to be heard. Opportunity for you to be able to come up and speak whatever's on your mind. Understand that we can't really converse on the topic, but you'll have three minutes to share whatever is on your mind. We'll start off with Jeff Felty. Please state your name and address, and yours, sir.
Jeff Felty, 11615 Shotgun Way, Holotus, Texas. I'm here tonight to talk to y'all about Jeep Line on Number 10, the 4H and FFA animals being allowed in the city. The 4H and FFA projects provide exceptional life skills, leadership skills to the children. They start in third grade or eight years old, whichever, and they can go all the way through senior and high school. My daughter started third grade, still continues doing it. Those animals, those projects, and I know y'all are looking at talking about rabbits in poultry. Those were basically, I don't want to say starter projects, but that's what a lot of kids start with, especially the younger kids, because it's an easier project to handle than steers. For example, you can't take a third grader that's like this and put them in with a 1700 pound steer. You can, but it's not the best thing to do. I think that this proposal that y'all have to allow it, the exemption for the FFA and 4H projects should pass. And I think you need to, if you do it, you need to make it happen effective immediately, because the 4H has already had their annual signups. It was last week. They are fixing to start having project meetings and fixing to start. The students, yes, we are able to keep them on O'Connor campus if the student is in the agricultural science technology magnet program, and they're allowed to have one pin over there on campus. But that's not open to third grade through eighth graders that are in the 4H program. And even the ones that are in high school that are not in the program at the magnet school are not able to do it. So I think y'all need to really look at this hard and move forward with allowing these kids to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, we have Mr. Brian Plantal.
Thank you for hearing me. I was unaware that this meeting was scheduled until just a few minutes ago, so don't have anything prepared, but I'm pretty upset, so I'll make it up as I go along. I'm here to address the complete contempt that has been shown to me from Republic Services and their utter unresponsiveness to any request. I live in a neighborhood where our space is very limited. There's only certain places we can put our cans. And what has been happening to me has been happening to some of the other residents in my neighborhood. They're actually putting cans behind my vehicles and blocking my ingress and egress from my property. So much so that to the extent, it happened a couple of weeks ago where I actually could not see the can placed directly behind my vehicle, and I backed into it, and it damaged my vehicle. And so I contacted them, and they said, well, you know, we'll file a claim, but they're probably putting those cans there to teach you a lesson as to where they want their cans. That's what they told me in the meeting. And so when I finally made contact with the insurance carrier, she basically told me, well, you know, we put cans behind your vehicle, so you should have looked. I find that completely unacceptable. I've gotten nothing but resistance at every turn. Every time I try and contact, you can't get hold of anybody in the local office. Everything bounces to a call center. I guess it's in Phoenix, which is where their home office is. But they give you, they give you lip service. They tell you, oh, sorry, we'll fix it, and nothing happens. So this has been an ongoing thing for months. I've got photographs to demonstrate just exactly what I'm talking about. So I don't seem to be able to get anywhere with them, so you, as our governing body, hopefully can light a fire under them to make them be more responsive to their end consumer, because this is where, we don't have anybody else to go to but you. I can't go to them. They don't do anything.
Understood. And just for the record, can you state your address, please?
Oh, sorry. 9607 Wasp Creek, 78023.
Thank you very much.
Holotus Crossing.
All right. Now, John Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is John Brous. I'm Vice Commander of American Legion Post 309, located here in Holotus. As an address, I guess we meet at the Holotus Lions Club Hall, which is 14690 Bandera. Normally, our commander would be here, Noel's Ashkinson, but several of you may know he fell ill on the 29th of July, hospitalized and really put in ICU, where he was there for about two weeks. Last week, they took him off the ventilator. He is now over at Rehab Center and going through extensive rehab. I just want to take a minute to thank everybody on the council and with the city for all the prayers and the get well wishes that they sent to him. Amazingly, it can do marvelous things. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, then conclude our citizens to be heard. At this point, we'll move to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion in a second to approve consent agenda items number three, four, and five is written.
Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items three through five as written.
Motion by Sanders, second by. Merchant beat you to the punch.
Sorry.
With no discussion needed, all in favor of approving consent agenda items three through five is written. Say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. So we have some updates, a couple of items. But the mayor's report, like to bring some text dot improvements. We continue to have regularly scheduled Zoom meetings. Our Fire Chief Scott Moreland has been very diligent in setting in those meetings and making additional phone calls. You may or may not have noticed, but I guess coming from the school areas, right turn to southbound Bandera, kind of finishing up that corner, and we'll be open, striping in there and some temporary crosswalk signage. I was really hoping for the southbound right-hand turn into the schools at Bill Miller was going to be complete. No such luck. I have made several comments in public. We were way ahead of schedule. We did hit a problem at the intersection with some significant limestone problems, which caused a loss of about three months in trying to figure out how to engineer that bedrock, if you will, and then, of course, the water main break. So the current loss of three, three and a half months there is now putting us at about the end of April to the beginning of May timeframe for final completion. Regular hours for Marketplace at Old Town Holotus resume for the market day starting in September. Again, that will be, excuse me, nine to 5:00 PM. That's correct, my memory. And because it was nine to three and now ten to five. But our vendors do show. Works. You're out there at what, 2:00 in the morning? I think probably. Feels like it, Corey. 5:00 in the morning setting up. Appreciate all the public works and then our Vanessa's, they've put together a fine product and continue to do a great job. Thank you, guys. Holotus Music and Movie Night. We do have a movie coming up here on September 15th. It will be the Mario, Super Mario movie, and we'll have the Holos Area Community Band and a great opportunity to kind of celebrate going back to school. And while we're at it, go ahead and mention that we are going to have a October Halloween bash with a Halloween themed movie. And there's some groups that are already reaching out to us about Jeep Club, I think wants to be out here passing out candy, and we got costume contest. And again, also a musical performance by community area band. So movie nights were not canceled. They were really just kind of limited a little bit because they dwindled down to about 20, 25 people. It just really was super cost and effective and not really a lot of interest in it. But doing it periodically brings a good group of people out, so we'll look forward to continuing that. This time, we're going to move on to our individual items. Looking for a motion in a second to discuss and take action on item number seven as written.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we discuss action on item number seven as written.
Motion by Massey, second by.
I'll second.
Sanders.
Okay, so I've been looking, I drove by to look at the sign. I am a little discomfited by, by the sign. This is, this is clearly not a maintenance. I understand that they're building out the road and that the signs that were there needed to be moved back. And so at the time, the owner decided that they wanted to refurbish the signs. And they do, they do look better to, except for the fact that the V-shaped sign is not a maintenance. It's a totally new sign. It's a new, a type of sign that is not allowed in our, in this area. It's a billboard sign. And so I agree with planning and zoning with, with their decision. I also wanted to look, I wanted to kind of mention the background of, of the sign, the original sign. Looking back at the information that was sent on March the first, 2016, is when planning and zoning approved, adding that five-foot by 10-foot panel to the main sign, the big sign, because there was another, another business there. So they put that sign underneath it. But the city, it said, the, the city council approved the same five-by-10 panel to be installed. However, the approval was contingent on that going forward. The sign was made out of exterior grade material. The poles repainted and an 18-inch monument base was added to the existing sign. And I don't, driving by there, I didn't see that there was any, any monument base. Maybe it was there before they pulled it down, although I'm looking at it now.
It wasn't.
It was not. So it was never put there to begin with, when the city council said that it was contingent on moving forward to do that. So not only that they not listened to the city council the first time, but now they put up a sign that is, that is not allowable in that area. And it, so I am against allowing it to go basically of variance for it.
So I, I got a question for staff. So I played back the PNC meeting on this issue multiple times. And I'm still a little bit fuzzy about the sequence of events. So I get it. Tech dot is forcing them to move because they're expanding 1560. So they had to move them, and they have to move them earlier than they, than they wanted to. When did they come to the city? That's kind of what I want to know.
So we, they didn't come to, well, we approached them because the sign was erected, and so code, code compliance went to them. And it did take months to get a proper application in from, from them. So this has been a pretty long-going process. Michael, when did the process start? Yeah, that we've been approaching and trying to get them to do the right application, turn in the right forms and so forth. And so we finally got, you know, it did go to PNZ one prior time. It got pulled and then got, came back.
That really seems to be a trend in ETJ. Nobody falls. We trying to do the right thing for businesses or trying to figure out a way, them say yes. Even though this, I, I agree with Councilmember Massey. This doesn't meet the definition for non-compliant signs. Maintenance is hard to find in ordinances, but if you go into restoration, that's where I, I found it where it really spells it out, and you guys probably knew this, but restoration means that the routine maintenance and painting of existing approved signs that do not change the approved design and color in any way. That's maintenance. And so I know the owner, you know, is trying to use that term maintenance as the reason why they made the changes. So I'm having a hard time support, supporting his request to counsel. On the other side, that sign is, is a non-compliant sign. It's going to be replaced with a non-compliant sign because he's going to put the old sign up. So this then starts, and again, I, I know what our ordinances say, but I look at, you know, what's the, what's the right thing for all people involved in this? It's, if it, if it looks better for the community and if it's better for the business owner, that's good. I know PNZ talked about precedence. I think it was Commissioner Blue that made a statement at the end of the meeting, which caught my ear. The only precedence we would be, we would be enabling or encouraging potentially would only be the non-conforming signs that are out there. Because anybody else who doesn't already have a non-conforming sign as 1560 gets built out by Fair County, right, will still have a say about the signs. They don't have a non-conforming sign already, so they can't come back with one of these and say, well, I'm just doing maintenance. Correct?
That's correct.
Am I interpreting that correctly? So it's not like additional business request permit to put up a monument sign out along the road. Though, all those new businesses along 1560 would have to follow that rule.
Correct. They would have to come, they would have to follow unless they come ask for a variance prior to.
Kind of have a rough estimate of how many non, non-conforming signs we have in the city. I mean, I know a couple just.
No, we don't. We have, we have not done an inventory. That would probably be the next step that we would like. Now that we have a code compliance officer, is to actually work with, you know, in development services and get some kind of inventory. The city has no inventory of anything like that. What they've been, what we've relied on previously is minutes and staff that have been here that know the history of it. So what I know Development Services has been working on, and what I've tasked Michael to do is basically get a lot of this information for like non-conforming signs, for, for monuments, for, what is it? Businesses, more, more than two businesses, the multi-tenant, get a list of, you know, multi-tenant agreements and so forth. And so a lot of that, that the city hasn't had, we are working on actually getting a database.
And I think the last thing, it's really just a statement. As I look through the sign, the sign portion of our ordinances, and we talked about the whole non-conforming thing is, ordinances aren't there to help keep. Really there to, to eventually at some point in time.
If they will go away.
To, to make them go away, not try to keep them in place.
You are correct.
So I constantly try to remind myself of that, because there is an aesthetic we're trying to do. But again, it's a balancing act, right? We don't want to harm businesses. We want our businesses to thrive in, in, in the city itself as well as in ETJ, so. I'm interested in what my other council members have to say on this.
Is the applicant here tonight? I don't believe, I don't see.
Okay, so like Craig, I went back and watched the P, PNZ movie, movie, the PNZ meeting. And originally, I was the PNZ liaison when this first, or when it came and they wanted to do it under multi-tenant. And then they made the point, well, originally approved as multi-tenant, and then somewhere along the way, hey, not multi-tenant, so go back to the drawing board. Now they're coming back with maintenance, so I feel like they keep coming back and trying to like throw pasta to the wall, see what will stick. And if, I don't know if that's a good metaphor for what's going on, but my concern is, as well, I agree with PNZ, there sets a precedence. That's really unfair to those who want to the proper process to get a sign. And there could be maybe a justification for a V-shaped sign there, but you don't go through the right process. I just, I, I agree with my fellow council members that it's, it's just not a good idea.
Previously, PNC and last meeting liaison, I would have to agree. Yes, this is not maintenance. Okay. But is this a good sign for that location? He didn't recognize that. He also recognized that the height was appropriate, considering the topography and the, the road that's going to be putting, put in there in relation to the sidewalk that's going to be across the street, because there's actually going to be, the sign is going to be servicing three different directions. You've got a road that's actually going to be flooding up to their entrance. So people are coming along that road and looking, you know, right where you see those trails coming down the top. Near there is going to be a road, right there. The point of that sign, because some people come down that road, they will see the sign. Also coming left and right, you would see it. So it serves a purpose for being a V shape. And that was one of the points that the owners presented, along with the fact that they did a, has a survey out there, which PNZ had asked previously, is, okay, how does the sign and the height relate to the new road? And they proved, and the PNZ recognized it, that. So ultimately, I believe it's the right thing to do. I mean, we want to help our businesses succeed, and giving them a sign that doesn't meet the need. So I believe it's, it's a good choice for the location.
Well said, Dave. I, I've been by this place a thousand times, and when I first saw the sign, the new sign come up, the V-shaped sign come up, I thought, wow. This jumps. I can see it. Like, you can see it. It's a, before it was kind of, you know, what it was, old and kind of hard to read. This is a good sign for the location. It's how they went about it that makes it really painful and a hard pill to swallow. So I'm still kind of trying to figure this out. But for the place, the location, what's going in there, this great big wide road, sidewalk, I mean, it's a good sign. It really is. For the business, but I can't, I mean, it's how they went about it that really is vexing.
So we have had a number of ETJ issues on sign. You know, like Councilmember Sanders pointed out, whether ignorance or just complete, figure the, see what they can get away with. Now, if they get caught, well, then they'll deal with it. We did make a significant exemption or exception for a significant monument sign for EST Fire Services. And on the basis of that it also conjoined with public information notices and whatnot. And that seemed to be a reasonable exception. I'm in favor of higher quality signs, and that's one of the things that we have, you know, it's been a kind of a long-term project to take a look at our sign ordinance and see what kind of updates we need to make, which probably lends to the number of variances where we've been looking at. That said, I'm, I'm really kind of neutral on this and believe, you know, I don't have a vote on this, but I, height-wise, we talked about, I just want to remind council, we talked about in the, in the special district in Old Town, we were talking about some possible exceptions, not just, the sign orders covered not only downtown where people are walking, but carried through to the backside, which was against Highway 16. And so therefore, because of the type of road that was, it required or a higher sign, much like the city's own sign, was significantly higher, 15 feet, does seem to be reasonable, particularly when it's calculated from outside on a gully. So I'm less concerned with height. I am extremely concerned with the lack of attention to the process and the fact that it's taken so long. And, you know, year of us contacting and going out there, that alone is, is problematic, whether it's a good sign or not. I don't necessarily saying I have a problem with what the sign says or how it looks. You know, it's not stunning sign. It's, it's a minimal, but the, the process is something that we have been taking advantage of a lot of occasions. And at some point, we can't just say, do what you want, and we'll figure out a way to be able to prove it, you know, sometime through. So we'll give one chance, in case there's any additional proposals or thoughts.
I mean, I would have to agree that they didn't follow the process. Perhaps they didn't have the guidance. I don't know what go through on that. But I don't think the expression goes, cut off your nose, despite your face. I mean, okay, they didn't follow the process, but ultimately it's a good sign for the location. Why should they be denied a sign or a good sign because of all the process?
Well, can I say something? Because I totally disagree. I don't like the sign. It's a menu. There's, it has all kinds of prices on the bottom and what, what's available. They have the other little sign next to it. I think it's an atrocious-looking sign. I don't think it's appropriate for the location, and it's quite large. I saw that sign from Beverly Hills Drive. That's pretty far. But I couldn't read it because the words are kind of small. It's not a very good-looking sign, and I don't think that they need a sign that is a billboard sign that is a V shape. I don't think it's appropriate for that spot. They could put a regular, a nice sign the way we want things. So I, I totally disagree. And maybe it's aesthetics that we're disagreeing on, but I'm also disagreeing with the process. And if we're going to stop this type of, this type of thing, we need to take a stand now and say, hey, just come in and deal with us. You know, and come to the city and do the right thing. But how many people now are going to start putting V-shaped, V-shaped signs all over the place? We talked about one time, they're appropriate on corner lot. That is a lot, the street that's going this way is the street into their property. It's not like another street that people are going to be driving back and forth through. It's their own property. So I don't think it was necessary to do this V-shaped sign. And again, I don't like the look of it, but but anyway, the, the process was wrong, and I just think that we should just take a stand and just say, no, you can't have that type of sign. Bring it back, and maybe that if they go through the process correctly, PNZ may say, change their mind. Who knows? But I, I still, I still want, I think it's an atrocious sign. I don't like the sign. I don't like the process, and so I will vote against it one way or another.
Well, there are several issues. There's, there's process, there's aesthetics, and there's, you know, the overall variance on height. So there are three separate issues that are going on here in the chat. Make up your mind. Time to vote. Do you have one more thing to say?
We're not going to support it, and I think for all. No, there's not, for me, there's no issue about the size, and whether it's back-to-back or V-shaped. That's, that's not, that's not my issue with it at all. It's just, we got ordinances, and I, I looked and I looked, and I was trying to find a way to make, to make this make sense so we can defend this in future, you know, requests, right? Because, you know, it's like raising children, right? It's you, you get, you don't, you don't, you change the way you, you behave and you don't follow the same rules over and over and over again. I know there's exceptions, you know, and as soon as you make that change for, for one, for one of your kids, then the rest are like, well, wait a minute.
Wait.
And then you can go down that road. So um, they're still going to have a sign. They're, they're still, everyone knows who they are. They're going to be fine. Um, and I say when fifteen sixty. Those come signs all over Van Deroe Road, right? So sometime when this gets expanded and all that will be developed all the way down to Chainfield. We all know that. Uh, that's, that's prime, prime real estate and that's all Berrick County that will be developed. So uh. I, I would hope all the signs are going to look like that. And so I was just trying to think down the road, but uh, I definitely understand where Councilman uh Kate was coming from. Cause they, there's, there's some positives to that as well.
Sounds good. Oh, we ready to vote?
So there are two signs.
There are two sign options, A and B.
Now you can decide to do a motion to vote on one first and then the second, or do it as, as both.
Okay, well, we'll do this one at a time because there are two separate. So I'm going to just take this.
The second one is the little one.
It's on the screen right now.
And that was grandfathered in because it was already there. Is that correct?
Right. If, if that's what was there.
And, and they changed it. So it's, it's the same size. It's just that they just changed it. It's not a maintenance issue. It's the chain.
And the applicant even said during the P N C meeting that he didn't like the, on the second sign, that sign, and he couldn't read it.
Yeah, it's.
So he didn't, he didn't even really like the new sign.
It isn't, it isn't. Yeah, you can't read it.
So on the sign request, A, sign A, the main post. With the shape change from double sided to V shaped. Yea will be approval and they will be denying all in favor of approving the variance to allow sign A, say, yay. All. Post a name.
Name.
Alright. Uh, reference to sign B, the second post sign along F M fifteen sixty approximately three hundred and twenty seven feet south from the entrance. All in favor of that sign, say aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion denied. Moving on to item number eight, looking for a motion a second to discuss and take action on a request by Kenneth Dempsey for approval of conceptual design plan. A motion by.
I'll move to discuss and take action on item number eight.
I'll second.
Yeah, um, I really do like this, this concept and I like the location of the concept where it is. Uh, it fits in the Old Town District. This is, uh, we've, uh, over the years, the council has talked about allowing a food park type thing situation. In the Old Town District. Um, it's, it's not going to be obtrusive. It's going to be kind of tucked away in, in, in the back area. Uh, and it's, and it's going to be very family friendly. Um, I like the aesthetics of it. Uh, I do have a question about. The brick that the building is.
Yes, my name is Ken Dempsey, fourteen, two oh three, Circle A Trail.
Uh, so I'm looking at the, I guess that's brick of different color, yellow and just a different kind of.
The intent is to have it out of cinder block and it was sent back to me saying, could you color it?
Oh, okay.
So.
It'll be colored cinder block, cinder.
Yeah, well, a lot of it's random. Most of it's going to be brown, white, a combination, a little bit of color to it.
Okay.
I wouldn't say there's going to be pinks or anything like that.
It's just colored for the diagram.
Yeah.
So you're looking very, very shades of brown, of that cinder block, rough and whatnot. Okay.
Different shades of brown.
It's not going to be just a bland color.
No, actually that was my original intent until I talked to people to help me draw this up and they said, you need to add a little bit of color to this. So.
That's a good idea. I, 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 I like that idea. Um, and um. I, I just think it's a very nice, nice plan and, and a good location. So I, I don't have any problems with it.
True.
Hey Ken, I, I don't have any issues with it either. I just a couple of questions though, and I know this is just conceptual. So is the area going to be paved? That, that you'll have the pickleball court, you'll have pavilion and you have the food trucks.
The area, as you see on the picture there, that putting green will be in an area in the center of six thousand feet. Since square feet of synthetic grass. Everything that is not where the food trucks are at will be synthetic grass or concrete.
But the, uh, but I think you're referring to the parking spots will be paved to match up to the paving.
That'll be blacktop, yes.
Okay, but that, and then my second question, um, parking, because right now you use a lot of that as kind of overflow parking. To um, the, the wedding venue place. And then I know a lot of us use it for the other facilities that, that are in that same location. So I, so I guess traffic will end up having to park elsewhere in Old Town, but right?
There's almost for more parking when I'm done than there is now.
Really? Oh, okay. But you're a good business.
Could you explain that?
Pardon me?
Could you explain that?
Yeah, if you see all the diagonal parking on the end, that may not necessarily be to scale. But there will be a ten foot parking spot going diagonal. So as they pull in, it'll be easier to pull in back out. Make a U turn around then. If you've been out there, they have an island, they can make the U turn and go back out.
I like the idea and uh, and it kind of brings it kind of a different. You'll be able to, I think, service a lot of other people, right? And a different demographic with this type of venue. With the, the folks that are already hanging out down there in, in the evenings and stuff. So I think it's great, great idea.
It was discovered that there's really no place in Old Town that really desires to have families or children. And I thought that'd be perfect. And people have told me, we need more food in Old Town. So I thought, well, let's do food trucks and we'll have a, an area where the children can play, you know, the typical. Horseshoe. Type stuff and, you know, a lot of items for the kids to play. No longer the kids are there, the, the parents will drink.
And then they can drive home. Alright, okay. Excellent. Great place for an Uber station is what I heard. That's what I heard in code there. Alright.
Those are pickleball courts too. So that'll be kind of new to the community.
Excellent. Alright, we'll start on this one.
Uh, no, I don't have any more comments. It's a good idea. Good.
Great idea.
Kim, from day one when we started talking about this, I thought this was a great idea. Decades uh developing Old Town uh from what it was into what it is today. Uh, I know there's been a lot of partners along the way and that are taking over certain areas of it, but thank you for what you've done for the city. And uh, I think this is just yet another in a long list of great ideas from, from you and I look forward to seeing this. Okay, with uh no other discussion, we'll go ahead and uh take a vote. All in favor of item number eight is written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations. Uh, next, looking for motion a second to discuss and take action on item number nine is written.
Now, make a motion to discuss and take action on item number nine is written.
Most motion by Merchant, second by.
I was checking the box. This is what this is. So um. We are going to plat unit five, Bryce Wood. Let's, let's.
I don't think there's really anything that's of a big surprise. Uh, this has been an ongoing uh process and uh, and. In multi-stage development. Uh, there's nothing new here other than what had been planned all along. Uh, very minor adjustments, uh. But um. Straightforward as a plating can be. Uh, tons of.
Now the city end.
Did it.
Alright, well, there's no discussion or questions. All in favor of approving number, item number nine is written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Which brings us to. Near and dear number ten. Uh, looking for a motion a second to discuss and take action on item number ten is written.
Mr. Mayor, move. We discuss and take action on agenda, item number.
Motion by Sanders, second by.
Second.
No sounds. Okay, motion by say, uh, motion by Sanders, second by Sones. So uh, just a little background, uh, we had this item as a discussion item uh several months ago. Uh, the animal ordinance is such that uh, uh, you had to have a certain size of acreage in order to have animals on your property. And of course, we are an agricultural community and have a magnet school at uh O'Connor for our uh ag program. And have been for decades, uh, been involved with four H and FFA programs, uh, which as uh, Mr. Felty had shared in. Citizens be heard, children from third grade on up uh through seniors in high school. Uh, most people in Lotus raise their rabbits and uh little baby chicks at home, completely oblivious that there was an ordinance against. Uh, until you get a citizen complaint or whatnot, uh. Not confirm nor deny in the existence of a rabbit in my backyard at one point or another, but uh, um. But then you find the ordinance, you realize, huh, look at that. Okay. And that's where we found ourselves. And so uh, we had a discussion and uh, we had fairly unanimous support for uh amending or putting an exemption. What we have before you right now, uh, and then we'll turn over for percussion if anything needed is uh really kind of taking the notes from the previously uh held council meeting. And kept our ordinance roughly the same, just through an exemption that there'll be no property size requirement for a single family home. Uh, to be able to have small caged animals such, such as rabbits and uh baby chicks. Uh, and for a time period of uh, people get their animals here at the end of August, beginning of school and it uh. Go through January where we have either Berrick County or the uh Gerlock um auction. And uh, so really we, if co-compliance gets a, a call or complaint and it's about, you know, a caged rabbit during that period of time. We're gonna be fine. I don't think we need to have uh, you know, certifications and registrations and a whole lot of paperwork going with that. But if we get uh resident complaints, uh, you know, in the middle of July, uh, you know, for, you know, thirty chickens in the backyard, obviously. Under the exemption. So that is what is before you. Uh, councilmember Sanders, you open it up. Do you have any additional thoughts?
The only thing I'm going to add for the folks out there who don't see uh what's in the proposed change to the ordinance. It's really saying August to January, right? So that dovetails into the whole F F A four H. The Gerlock uh live show sale is.
I think we're more. For the rabbits and the chickens? Yeah. I was thinking that was.
But uh, I think, I mean, most, almost everybody is going to go to. Yeah, that's what, since I've lived here for thirteen years, that's, that's seems to be the thing. I, I don't have an issue with this. It has to be modified, it just extended out if, if the community demands that or has to file. Solid reason to do that. This is really urgent, right? This needs to be done ASAP. So I, I support.
Uh, I support this as well. And when this originally came on the agenda earlier this year, we had a lot of citizens come out and educate me and Mr. Felty. Appreciate you coming out tonight because uh, I did not have children who did four H, but I do support making life easier for parents. As opposed to they explained in the spring that the running, especially at the beginning phase, it's just much more convenient to have that at home. And this ordinance gives um our code enforcement the ability to address issues if there are any, which I do not anticipate that being the case. So I am supportive of this.
Just that I've actually just agreed that there are going to be issues because if we look at item A. And considering our horse canions deed restrictions prohibited, it will be illegal to have chickens in our horse canion. So that means code enforcement is going to have to enforce that.
Yeah, but enforcement does not have that.
No, that's not a deed restriction. It's simply saying it is, is illegal. Right here, it's, it's saying it's only legal in these instances. It's saying it's, the way I read it. Will be allowed and zoning district except for residential deed restrictions. So it's, you're not enforcing the deed restrictions. This is the law. It's saying the deed restrictions prohibited, therefore it's not allowed.
Right, but the city will not enforce it.
I'm not saying that. I think the city will have to enforce their law, which says it's illegal to have. Chickens in an area where you have deed restrictions.
I think what you're, what you're.
The way I read it.
I think what you're confusing is uh, wh- what is permissible and what the responsibility of the city is to enforce. Or is responsible of the city is to enforce its ordinances, but if you have a deed restriction. Homeowners Association, that is homeowners association issue to. Force. So this was one issue that was brought up that uh, the individual communities, we can only provide, we can't mandate HOA regulations from the city. What we do is if we, if we say there will be no animals in the city. The homeowners association can't say, well, you can have them here because we can restrict what happens. However, the city can say we can allow them anywhere, but a homeowners uh association can have more restrictive uh restrictions. Therefore not allow them in their particular HOA. So that becomes an HOA issue. Uh, we're only allowing them to be able to. It, it's permissible in the city, whereas previously this. Doing this passes. It didn't pass, then it would not be allowed regardless of what the HOA said.
Well, the way I read it, it's not allowed by the city in areas where there's deed restrictions. Uh, if that was the intent, then I would suggest rewording. Okay, but as it reads, I, I read it as it's allowed in any zoning area or it's not allowed in any zoning area where the restrictions are there. So I understand this. It is never going to. Enforce the deed restrictions. Way it word, way it reads, I think it opens yourself up to.
That's a question with to Frank about that, because that is. Because um subdivisions that actually have HOAs, uh, the HOAs, what is their law enforcement? How do they go about? Do they just go and put notices?
Files. They, they send letters. They don't have any police authority, but they can.
Files and that kind of thing. Correct. Because I know in the subdivision that I live.
Go to court, take them to court.
We don't have an HOA, but we do have deed restrictions on our, you know, when you read our deeds, it says you're not. Whatever. There's plenty of donkeys and goats in our subdivision and I remember calling city hall to ask about that. And they, they just tell them, well, we don't, uh, we don't um police uh the, the, the restrictions and. So why do we, why are, why do you have deed restrictions that cannot be enforced?
Well, again, that's a private civil matter, but if there is no HOA, anyone else who's under the same deed restriction, your neighbor. Could take you to court for failing to comply with that restriction that they also have to comply with.
So if somebody had a donkey next door and I didn't want it, then I could take them to court. That's the way I would do it.
That's correct.
Okay.
That was the intent of this, then you take out the acceptance at the end of the period. If that's the intent of the council.
Look at, kind of me. So I can amend that.
Frank, so Frank, I don't think it's necessary to take it out. So.
Do you see where he's saying about taking that out? I mean, do you, as your opinion, do you feel that?
A fourteen forty one.
A.
You feel that that's something that is necessary or? As it reads?
It helps us homeowners who don't have an HOA.
If I remember the history, it was, the city was trying to avoid getting in conflict with HOAs that did have her deed restrictions. And so they wanted to make it clear, look, this is our. And so they wanted to make it clear, look, this is our rule, but if you have deed restriction, you, you enforce that rule. And so I understand why it was written that way, but I also understand why it could be confused that we're basically, the city is saying, you can't put it where there's a deed restriction. That's gonna be up between the property owner and the HOA, or the property owner and the neighbors with regards to who, who has those deed restrictions. Because the city is, has no authority to enforce deed restrictions.
So is a, is a matter of legal, as it's written now, uh, the way I read it is that it's just saying, hey, if it's a, if it's allowed in the area, it's allowed within the city limits unless you have a restriction, in which case, uh, it's not allowed, uh, and but enforcement of that, how it's written, still resides on the HOA.
Well, and I see.
Regardless of our interpretation.
Yeah, it, that, and that's where I see where his argument is coming from, because it says, this is a city ordinance, and therefore there's arguably that the city would enforce by saying, hey, there's a deed restriction, you can't put it there because it's a city rule.
Could we then, uh, make a friendly amendment there to include to just put a period after zoning district period and just wipe out the rest of it as far as the ordinance?
Yeah.
And that would eliminate that, that way if there is any issue would be on the HOA.
It would be on the HOA correctly.
So going back to councilmember Sanders, uh, well, let's finish up conversation here, let's, let's finish up conversation in case there's any other corrections.
I don't know, it just weakens it for those of us who live in subdivisions that don't have HOAs. I really don't like the idea of leaving it off. Because.
Well, in the HO, you don't have an HOA, so you can't have a.
I do have deed restrictions though.
Your deed restrictions still.
They're still gonna apply.
They're still apply.
And I can still, even though, because then if you take that out, though, it says, and animals which are normally in customer kept, uh, including chickens, turkeys, goat, cattle and horses will be allowed in any zoning district.
Right, but if you have a deed restriction, you can enforce that deed restriction. It's just, this gives the impression that the city can enforce the deed restriction.
Well, enforce the law, however you wanna look at it.
I, I, I understand, it's just that a lot of citizens don't understand that they, they probably have this deed restriction.
I think the, the, the case here is whether the general public understands the legalese. What it's actually saying is that these restrictions, it's not taking away the power of deed restrictions, you still have deed restrictions. That's another chapter, verse of enforcement of deed restrictions. This is just simply saying that they're allowed anywhere and implied, in, in this case, it would just be left implied. Yeah, restriction otherwise.
Otherwise.
Sounds implied, like something like.
So.
How about, okay, how about this? Okay. It would read, will be allowed in any zoning district, semi-calling, however, comma, a residential deed restriction may disallow such use.
There we go.
Okay.
That way, it's, it's saying that city's not gonna enforce it, but there may be a residential deed restriction.
A vow pleased me, yes.
Okay.
Have good.
Got that.
We have it in the recording.
Good.
That's why we.
See, that's why I get invited once in a while to these.
You might wanna.
I'm glad you were here tonight.
Might wanna mark down, uh. Comment is. Okay, do you have any comments?
No, I have no comments.
All right, so Greg, if you might want to amend your, uh, motion to approve with the.
Agreed upon.
With the.
Change to.
Right.
To read however, a residential deed restriction may prevent.
May disallow such use.
So we have amended motion. And so we are now going to vote on this amended motion. All in favor of approving item number ten is written with. Worry.
Yes.
Say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. At this point, we're looking for a motion in a second to discuss and take action on item number eleven is written.
Discuss and take action on item number eleven is written.
From Nancy, I'll second, second by Merchant, this is pretty much straightforward item.
Well, you would think so, but I like to know, yeah, I like to know, I'm, I'm seeing where they want, is the sign gonna be facing? When you're driving old Bander Road up to Dent Lane, is it gonna be facing that, and that's where you, is it gonna be facing this way or is it gonna be facing this? Or this road going that way? Which way is it gonna be facing?
It's gonna be facing that towards El Shop Road.
So, so the car, so it's, it's, the, the people who have to stop are the ones that are on Dent Lane or Old Bander Road driving up or back down?
Coming back down.
Coming back down, okay, so it's gonna be on that side. Oh, I see, okay.
Because that's where they're coming and you have people trying to cut through, you know what I mean?
So you have, they have, I, I, okay, that makes sense, I was just trying to figure out which way it was gonna be facing. So someone's coming from El Shop Road down.
Towards prime time.
They have to stop.
Why was it done in only one direction? Because, I mean, people come up Dent Lane to go to El Shop Road and continue.
Because you travel this way, you only need to stop this way because of traffic to come in there. You're driving on the, the trap sort of stopped.
Right.
Unnecessary. Other issues?
No, I stopped there anyway.
Okay, all in favor of approving item number eleven is written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number twelve, looking for motion and discussion, uh, motion and second to discuss and take action of item number twelve is written.
Mayor, make a motion that we discuss and take action on item number twelve.
Motion by Merchant, second by.
I'll second.
Sanders, and I believe we have a representative from EDC, Glenn. All right, uh, I believe we have before as a tenant improvement incentive grant, and, uh, just wanna give us a brief.
Absolutely, the, uh, our retailer, uh, tenant improvement grant has picked up a little bit more steam toward the, uh, end of this year, uh, which we were all very encouraged to see, uh, if this particular item, uh, gets approved, uh, that puts us over eighty-five thousand. And we still anticipate one or two more that may come in this fiscal year, or it'll be the first part of twenty-four if that budget item gets approved. Uh, this particular tenant is Playables, uh, SA, this will be their third location, uh, in Bear County. They're taking over a space off Business Parkway, uh, that was former Hugo Juicery. Overall, their anticipated project cost was a little over two hundred and fifty thousand with, uh, interior improvements being around ninety-five thousand for that project. They earned, they, they met the, uh, I won't say the minimum requirement, but actually met our maximum requirement, uh, on the scoring matrix. And so they qualified for up to twenty-five dollars of square foot reimbursement, uh, for this particular project, though, twenty thousand is our maximum grant amount. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
As I recall in the EDC meeting, this is one of the few that actually followed the rules, got it done, did it right.
Uh, not.
No?
Not one of the few that follow the rule, all the ones that have been approved have followed the rules. Uh, we have had to deny a couple of them.
Right, this guy's like, did it right.
Yeah, he, absolutely.
Right, that's what.
No, absolutely.
I mean, he did it right, so, yeah, good.
What is Flyables, what is this?
It's like acai bowls and he's gonna have smoothies, um, they do have a website, I don't know if you wanna pull it up, but. It's a healthy.
Healthy, healthy, super food type, uh.
Yeah.
Super fruit?
Food.
This is Fruit Bowl, that's why.
Fruit Bowl, yeah.
Oh, Fruit Bowls, okay, I'm sorry.
It's basically like a high nutritional bowl type of thing.
But it's all fruit.
I was looking like keenwah and stuff like that.
They're smoothies and everything.
Smoothies, yeah, and they're more like, it's more like a, um, not an ice cream, but, um, what are, what are they?
Like a smoothie.
This one.
Well, there's a picture.
Yeah, and then you can put fruit on top of it, granola on top of it, and so peanut butter drizzle.
Chia seeds, cheese, yeah.
Talking with residents, I hear a lot that they'd like healthier options. Don't get me wrong, I love Barbie, right? But they're, they're really in the city limits, are not a lot of healthy, so they started serving salads, I mean, that, I know that's not on their menu, but that's another thing I hear, so, anyway, this is great.
Yeah, so, my only comment is I wish them luck, they're in a tough business area, uh, it's kind of a dead zone over there, so. Um, with a young crowd from the school kids coming over there at lunchtime, I'm hoping they'll, they'll, they'll be successful. But this program is a good program, uh, it's one of those many great things EDC is doing, so, awesome.
Any other comments? All right, well, no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number twelve is written, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, looking for motion as second to discuss and take action on item number thirteen has written.
And do I move, we discuss and take action on agenda item number thirteen has written.
A motion by Sanders, second by Kato, and this is yours as well there, sir.
Now, I, the EDC board or governance committee, uh, is responsible for recommending, uh, reappointments from the EDC to city council. Uh, there's definitely no question in their mind nor mine, uh, that we have a really an excellent board, very different opinions, so we always get, uh, a lot of conversation, um, which provides good direction for us moving forward.
Well, having been involved with the appointment of three of the four, I highly agree with you. Any comments from anyone?
No, I just wanna say the whole team, not just the folks up for renomination, you guys have kicked it into a, a second, third gear, um, over the last year and a half, so, um, yeah, how could we say no, they're, they're doing great.
Yeah, and I appreciate these people serving, they are busy, looking at Mr. Felty back, they're busy, and, um, I know they have a lot of things on their plate, so I appreciate them continuing to step up and serve.
No, I, I, I agree with, uh, councilmember Sones, um, just thank these people for, um, stepping up again and asking to be reappointed.
And while I missed John's grand opening, I look forward to. Check it out.
Fantastic.
Check it out.
I expected it out, fantastic.
I'm always a board member who's a business.
Be careful how many times you check it out.
Glenn's gone several times.
My doctor said I gotta stop going so much, but.
All right, well, no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number thirteen, which would be the reappointment of Melissa Benavides for place one, John Kuduski for place three, Jeff Felty for place five, and Joel Lutz for place seven on the HEDC board of directors, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this point, we're gonna have a presentation and discussion of the proposed fiscal year in twenty twenty-four City for Lotus Economic Development Corporation operating budget. By another, Mr. Glenn Goolsby.
All right, you know, it's once in a blue moon privilege to stand up here for multiple items. And I think the next couple of days, our city council meetings, uh, will be the same, we have a lot coming before you guys at the end of the year. So again, our governance committee has met, they've gone over the strategic plan, uh, that will be coming before you likely at the next board meeting. Um, made very few minor changes, I think most of our plan still is relevant, uh, moving forward. And then that led into our, um, finance committee kind of setting our budget, uh, for this year. So looking at what we projected for twenty-three, where we actually are, uh, and then looking forward, uh, for next year and projections. So some of those kind of changes, um, we're anticipating only about three point two million dollars, uh, in sales tax to be collected by the HEDC. I know last year, we thought it'd be a little bit higher, uh, we, one of our businesses, that is our primary sales tax producer, uh, has taken a hit with the residential market. Uh, some of those numbers are starting to come back, uh, that's why we kind of feel comfortable with this particular number. Uh, we do highlight that one point five million, uh, is remitted in a chapter three eighty agreement, uh, that was approved I don't know, six, seven years ago, I think at this point. Um, other combined revenues for the EDC, uh, committed about a hundred and seventy-six thousand. The next slide kind of shows the, uh, trend of sales tax where you can see the, the spike for when we did get the three eighty agreement, um, into the city to collect the sales tax and then the boom in the residential market. Um, and then now we're seeing a little bit, uh, drop in that.
That's a significant drop, that's what, roughly seven hundred K?
Yes, sir.
We had, uh, a big chunk of that happened, uh, a lot of it was with, uh, one, uh, provider, but a lot of it also happened in, uh, uh, October and, uh, November. Number, when, uh, construction started, we saw a, a big hit on, uh, our Main Street businesses, uh, and of course, that was amplified with the, uh, uh, BMC's cabinet deliveries to residential homes that started taking hit with interest rates. So, uh, like Glenn said, we, uh, we have noticed a, a recovery, uh, in our Main Street businesses. I'm happy to say that, uh, in speaking with them, a lot of them had, uh, kind of refocused to lunch crowds versus supper crowds, uh, for some of our restaurants. And, uh, when all said and done, they started, uh, evening out, there were definite hits and different businesses took hit, different hits in different months. But of course, the main player there is BMC. Our builder first is.
Builder first, yeah. Okay, the next slide kind of shows you the breakdown of where we receive our revenue, so, yeah, lion shares from sales tax, uh. The good news, I think for everyone in this room and for us, the interest rates are paying dividends at this point, where we earned just a little over twelve thousand last year, uh, we're looking at excess of a hundred and thirty thousand this year, uh, in interest. And that's interest on our, uh, reserve funds. Excellent. So kind of a synopsis of the, the budget, we've got personnel expenses, we've got our contractual services, which encompasses most of the, uh, incentive programs, we have a long-term debt obligations come out of that. Um, and then the commodities in capital outlay, the capital outlay is the, uh, the money we transfer uh, to pay some of the, uh, debt services from, um, city projects that qualify under the type B corporation. So adopted, you can see the adopted FY twenty-three, uh, expenses for around four million. Right now, I mean, we're just under two and a half million, uh, still have a couple of months to go, and then projected for next year is three point seven. So let's say some of the kind of highlights, uh, the big changes in the budget, on the tenant improvement grant, we wanted to allocate about a hundred and thirty thousand this year, but knowing we have a few projects that may carry over to twenty-four, uh, we were going to, uh, I guess, boost that line item up, uh, so we didn't have fewer applicants, uh, that could apply. So we anticipate about sixty thousand right now to carry over, visitor center, uh, we are nearing the end of our fiscal year, there'll be some minor, uh, demolition, uh, and probably architecture fees that come out, but majority of it will carry over to next year. Uh, and then we'll have additional expenditures with just furniture fixtures, um, for that space and some ongoing, uh, expenses, uh, with IT and, uh, internet and all that kind of stuff. The same, kind of the same thing holds true for our arts granted incentive, uh, we're keeping it at fifty thousand for new projects, uh, and then carrying over thirty-five for the one that was approved in FY twenty-three. Uh, that project is likely gonna take eight to ten months, uh, for the artists to build. And then we, as an EDC, committed to making improvements to the traffic circle, uh, which right now we anticipate that to be around twenty-five to thirty thousand.
I'm out of that art strand zone because it's related, yeah, fair enough, thank you.
And so our targeted business incentive, last year we had four hundred thousand, we had not utilized any of that, uh, at this time. Uh, we're projecting to put about three hundred thousand into it for, uh, this coming year, and I can say we've already had two requests, um, the new projects, uh, for, for twenty-four, a likely breaking ground. That, it's kind of some of that fund we'll utilize that for. Uh, and then the three eighty agreement, last year we budgeted two million dollars.
Could you give me smart real quick on that, the target business incentive? I mean, we haven't been using it, but we think we are now.
So the
I'm not familiar with her. I must have missed it.
No, it's it's okay. Uh on our website, uh under our incentives tabs, the we currently offer, I guess, three incentives for businesses in the community. We have our tenant improvement grant. We have the e-commerce grant. And then we decided to establish a targeted business incentive grant. So it it's much more broader. Uh there's not a maximum grant amount specified in it. Uh we ask, it's a pretty lengthy uh application process uh to try to figure out what the impact of the individual business will be to the community. Uh and then they will request the amount they're looking for, and then it's up to the EDC board to kind of evaluate it, see if it's worthwhile, and if it's something we truly want to bring in. So very flexible uh grant.
But if I heard you right, we haven't used it yet.
We have not. We have not expended any monies for it. So yeah, the the three eighty agreement reimbursement, we anticipate right now, just based on uh estimated from uh FY twenty three and what we're looking for twenty four, be about one point five million, so five hundred thousand less uh than last year. So we've seen on our revenue side about a five percent decrease uh from last year, and then on the expenditure side about a nine percent decrease. And obviously, the the biggest uh decrease on that was the uh tax sales tax related to um service first. Or not service first, uh builders first. And so what we're kind of projecting um in our reserves will be uh four million dollars at the end of the year. And a lot of that savings from uh reduced expenses this fiscal year. So I know we have, we've already done our public hearing uh at EDC. We've got that coming forth at the next city council meeting uh for this body. And then we'll have one more uh board meeting, public meeting uh in September twentieth uh before it finally gets approval before city council on the twenty eighth.
Do you ask any questions? I'm happy to go through it.
Pretty straightforward.
I have one question on the information that we got here on the very, very last line of the of the proposed operating budget. It has play park and playground equipment, but there's nothing there.
Correct.
Uh and then there's a question mark. So if, why is that there if there's nothing there?
So there was a request uh made to the EDC to consider uh some park and playground improvements. Uh one was a children's playground, I think, basically age range one to five. Uh and then a dog park uh for the disc golf course. Uh the board discussed it at the last EDC meeting. And they decided at this time not to allocate any money toward it. There's going to be further discussion uh both between EDC and uh I think our executive committee with with uh Mayor Whitehead and then between us and city council to figure out how exactly we're going to move forward.
So in previous times that uh when requests were made, because part of the mandate to EDC is to draw business in, uh fill in spaces within the uh community and also to increase uh the attraction of the city. Uh we keep seeing a uh significant rise and a constant rise in in reserves, which is good. Uh of course, to a point, the city has experienced similar success. Uh of course, we manage that by reducing property taxes so we can kind of control that uh amount of growth, whereas uh the EDC uh does need to do something with that or have some sort of plan. I know there are ultimate long term ideas. Previous years, we brought ideas, EDC projected for as well as to it's not quite budget time, et cetera. And so now, at the time of budget time, we've brought uh very appropriate projects uh for review that were denied. So what is your plan or what is the board's plan to do with four million dollars if they're not going to spend you know, twenty five thousand on improvement on the city when one of their major and main and one of their priorities is for enhancement of the city?
They actually agree with you uh as far as there's a need for more, I would call it quality of life uh projects. There's a little more evaluation that they're asking for into those particular projects, but they're open to considering additional projects as well. Part of the reason that we have to include it, oh yeah, the question marks is just the uh accounting uh for INCO. We don't know what account number uh is free to assign on that one. Uh but we have to identify in our public notice for to comply with uh the state law. Anything that we anticipate spending money on. Um so that's why we included in our public notice. So it gives us the ability uh to consider it. And right now, we're still kind of in that process uh to consider. Um and there is definitely an
So there'll be a request to meet to.
So the EDC would like to set up a almost like a, I don't know, an advisory committee or subcommittee uh between council and themselves, maybe two from each to identify specific uh quality of life or park improvement projects around the city. And then go about, yeah, funding it. The highest and best use of funds was kind of the primary thing they were pointing out.
Well, I do I do hope that they uh they're serious about, you know, and I agree with the the mayor on this. If the request was for twenty five thousand dollars.
Oh, there's, but to be fair, there was twenty five, sixty five, or fifteen.
It was totally.
Of various.
It was a hundred and twenty five thousand over.
Total of all the projects.
Yeah. So the problem was they weren't sure that the that the the different projects were worthy.
Not exactly. So uh I mean, if we want to talk about individual projects, we can.
No, just to just just in general, I think at this point, you're looking for a budget. Uh you're presenting a budget. It's not an action.
Well, I guess some and and that's the reason I'm asking because it's not included in the but I mean, the 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 title is, but there's no number there.
Correct.
So if we approve a budget without a number there, then it's not going to be budgeted.
Well, this is this is not an approval tonight. This is just a presentation. So we're coming back. So.
It'll be coming back hopefully with a number in there?
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha. So we're 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 all we're doing is uh frameworking this and that there's a they're ninety nine percent complete. They have a line item and they're still need some discussion to go back and forth. So we look forward to meeting with uh make it available to uh meet and continue discussions on that item.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sufficiently answers that.
Okay.
Question. Other thoughts? All right. Uh there is no action on this item. So thank you very much. I appreciate your work and uh members of EDC, fine job. Number fifteen is a presentation discussion of our municipal fee schedule.
So there's really um not ma- not many fees that we're proposing to increase. The majority is from the days of Allah contract. So those have to be implemented into our fee schedule. So that's a majority. There are two from development services, just because we've seen an influx of requests in these, and it does take a staff time, or it does take us having to um have the engineers at some of these meetings. So the two that we're we're actually um requesting.
So we're actually asking for an increase on our reinspection fees. And then the other two are going to be items that we're going to actually add. So currently, our reinspection fees are sixty five dollars. We're going to move that to seventy five dollars. That's what we're proposing. Uh it aligns well with some of the other cities that uh you know, kind of have the same uh population demographic uh buildings and and um concepts that we do. So for example, you know, we would, based on the research that I did, we're looking at uh we're still kind of like at the low end of that, if believe it or not, you know, went from sixty five to seventy five. But if you look at cities like Sibyllo, where they start out at seventy five, and then they'd have a tier system. So they have a second reinspection. It goes to a hundred, then it jumps to two hundred. So at this point, we're we're not going to do anything drastic like that. We just kind of want to go from sixty five to seventy five. Part of the reason we're doing this is that we're going to recoup some of the money that um our city inspector agreement is actually going to go up. So their contract's going to go up. They're going to raise their prices to about thirty three percent. So we figured that we would kind of implement this and do it in phases. As you can recall, Mary, you know, uh last year and the year before, we did, we changed our extension prices. Uh we did a flat rate for the pools. You know, we we made different changes to our fee schedule. So we decided that it's probably best to just do it in phases. So this coming fiscal year, we'd like to do sixty five to seventy five. And then the following fiscal year, maybe in twenty twenty five, we'll revisit that and see if we need to do a tier system as well. Just to give you some more numbers, I mean, like I said, seventy five is kind of kind of the me- happy medium for us and actually a low ball. We would do seventy five, and if you felt an inspection, then you do another seventy five and so forth. You know, another example would be like someone like Liveo. They're at seventy five. You fill the inspection inspection again, then it's a hundred dollars. Balcony sites start site at one fifteen. So I feel like, you know, what we're doing is is feasible. And and again, we're we're going to attack it in in phases.
Certainly, the uh it's a lot of our fees on inspection because we contract out because we don't have employee. Uh that's what drives that. I know uh over the past two and a half years, it's been a focus to help reduce and put the nickel in the diming, and we have reduced fees in a in a broad uh base of uh categories. But uh in this particular one, where it's actually, we're paying contract labor to go out there, and that price has increased significantly. This is a uh very nominal increase to help offset actual incurred cost.
Right. And then the other way, we're going to uh offset some of the incurred costs that we we've been coming with the new um agreement that we reach with our third party vendor would be, you know, uh just in today's uh agenda items, you know, we're going to have a little bit more movement than we had in the past few months. So for example, with the Bryce with passing, then we can anticipate those permits coming in or permit applications coming in. Uh you got Ken Dempsey and and we have a pod that, you know, in the near future. So those are kind of the ways that we'll be able to, you know, bringing some of that that money to to offset, you know, their increase.
Any questions?
We do have two new ones that we're actually asking.
Correct. So the so the so the second one would be our zoning verification letter. So this is primarily used by real estate brokers or uh agents that want a formal letter. You know, for, you know, the history or of sown uh buildings or whatever it may be, uh contracts that they're negotiating with the bank or so forth. So in the past, we've never uh charged anybody for that. And we did a little bit of research, and there are some cities, and again, prices for that uh basically fluctuate anywhere from, you know, free to, you know, a hundred dollars or whatever it may be. So we found that, you know, to cover administrative cost, you know, twenty five dollars is 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 reasonable. We don't get many of those, but lately we have been.
Sounds good. Questions?
I have a question on the the last sentence on the predevelopment meeting fee. It says after one hour, fees will apply in fifteen minute increments.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that one yet. I'll I'll cover that.
Oh, you're still on the first one.
The second one, the zoning verification, yeah. So, okay, so on the predevelopment, uh basically, in the past, you know, we've, that's also been uh uh something that we provided free. Uh based on our research, again, that that's something that also fluctuates from free to like, you know, uh just depending on the city, you know, it could be anywhere from seventy five, a hundred, you know, uh but for a city our size, I think, you know, seventy five dollars is 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 reasonable to cover administrative costs. So there is some things that that go into that. Uh first of all, it's not required, it's recommended. Um second of all, you know, it it does take a lot of coordination because what basically happens at that is you have a a developer to make come in with a concept and wants to meet with the city regarding that. So in order for us to hold that development meeting, we'd have to bring in our fire marshal. We'd have to bring in our city inspector. And based on the commercial project, we would also have to bring in our city engineer. Uh so there's different facets to that meeting. The reason we feel that we can charge is that because it benefits the city in this way. Uh you know, you have an applicant that actually has to pay for that, but they're going to come better prepared. You know, we're going to limit them to an hour. Um anything past an hour, then we'll we'll charge in in fifteen minute increments. So for example, if it's seventy five dollars, and then you go past the one hour and go between an hour and an hour and fifteen minutes, then you're paying about an additional eighteen seventy five or so.
So it's seventy five dollars per hour, fifteen minute increments, one hour minimum.
That makes sense.
Seventy five divided by four?
Yes.
Eighteen seventy five.
So so we do, we're doing all of this to offset our third party contractors to support these activities?
Well, in the first case, in my, in this particular case, not so much. So a little bit because we're bringing in uh, you know, inspector, but we got time from our fire marshal. We got city administrator sometimes. We got his time. We got my time in there, even though I'm not paid.
You're free.
And so bottom line, it's just like, they're getting the advantage of four or five people coming in to take a look at the concept or predevelopment meeting. And so therefore, we we are actually expanding actual services uh on that.
Uh and just a general statement, and I I think we do a really good job. A a couple of years ago, we really baseline went through the fees. And where we thought we were gouging people, we fixed that.
Right.
Pools and all that. Um I just, when I I listen to stuff I hear um from the EDC about, there's a lot of people that don't want to come here to develop. And and I always worry, is it all the fees? Is it all these, are we nickel and diamond people, businesses? Does do we make it cost prohibitive for people who want to come here and develop? I mean, I I that's just a just a thought. It's just a statement. I'm not saying this is, it's always in the back of my mind.
Right. But you know, in something like this, we've had so many people come and ask for predevelopment, and they're not prepared. And and we feel that if they're are paying a fee and they're and they're only given an hour, they're going to come prepare instead and have all the documents that we are requesting because we have an application that requires.
Fair enough, right? If I have to pay, I'm I'm not having.
You're going to be prepared, right?
And I I think the other thing to add to that is that, you know, the concepts have changed a little bit. You know, we're not longer just building buildings and houses. You know, we've got food truck parks now. We've got pods. And so, you know, that I think, you know, people are exploring different options and things to do in the city. So, you know, I think it it aligns well with what what we're presenting. So while we're here, uh this is actually something that we want to implement for fiscal twenty four, right? But I kind of want to just kind of throw this out there for fiscal year twenty five. Uh so there are some things that, you know, in comparison, like I said, to other cities that kind of fit the Lotus uh, I guess, demographics and and uh socioeconomic uh status and and the things that we like to do here, right? Uh we're looking at uh maybe presenting and to you for now, uh some more uh permit and options that, you know, we've actually researched. So for example, one, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. One is a re roof permit. You know, one of the things I looked at in the history of the Lotus is that, you know, we don't have a re roof permit. And I couldn't find out any reason why we don't.
Doesn't fall under regular building permit?
So a re roof would be like, let's say, you have an existing structure and you're just going to put a brand new roof. I I mean, pretty much every other city does it for whatever reason we don't. Now, as far as building a brand new house, yes, the roof comes with. Building a brand new building, building the QT, the roof comes with it. But a re roof permit would be someone that's just scrapping their old roof and putting it anywhere. Um I've had conversations with our third party vendor, BB inspections. And one of the things they say, you know, they couldn't answer that either. We don't know why the city for Lotus doesn't do that. So that's something that maybe in fiscal year twenty twenty five, we're looking at doing. Lastly, the other thing that, you know, I kind of want to leave you all with is uh, we'd also like to implement um contractor registration database. So basically, any contractor that does work in the city of Lotus has to be registered with us. Again, that's something that a lot of other cities do that we don't. The reason we're waiting to push that maybe in fiscal year twenty twenty five because there are a lot of logistics to go with that. Some tangibles that we have to think about before we implement anything like that. Uh how to actually keep track of that.
The benefit. Mayor, I'm I'm gonna have to, the the agenda item says twenty twenty four municipal fees.
Yeah.
And he's talking about twenty five, so.
Thank you very much. So we have to keep that uh to twenty twenty four. But uh this is a presentation. There's no action item on here. Any other direct questions? Okay, thank you very much. Uh which brings us to.
Uh, which brings us to, uh, our next item, which is a presentation of a just quick budget update.
Right, correct. So, um, as we were going through the budget, um, one of the things that we have noticed with the increase of police officers, there are more tickets being written. More tickets being written has been put an impact on our courts. So as we've evaluated, um, the number of staff that we have at court, we made a decision that, or a recommendation to add one more court clerk. Because right now, we are just overwhelmed with the tickets that the police officers are writing, you know, and so that does increase on the court side, so we'll have to increase the court. There was a domino effect that we probably didn't look at and we should have looked at. Adding new, more police officers does put a more strain on our court system.
So this is just a minor update to, to reflect that. We obviously have, uh, cash available to be able to cover it. Uh, as you can see, it's just, uh, nominal amounts. There's really no action on this item, but the action item will be when we approve the budget in September. I was really just kind of updating you some of our needs, and if there's a particular question on the viability or need of the.
This is to add, um, uh, one extra personnel.
To authorize an additional staff.
No personnel in the court, um, department and all the extra operational fees associated with it.
It would be a clerk position that's seen on there to customer service and process of.
Okay.
So, so the tickets almost pay for that person, right?
So, uh, let's just take a brief moment, because a lot of this comes up in, uh, social media. Uh, I get accused all the time of, uh, well, I've told the police not to enforce the middle pass-through. Well, if that's the case, then where are all these tickets coming from? Uh, secondly, uh, well, we're all about the money. Well, if we're all about the money, then we couldn't, you know, if we haven't given out tickets, then we can't be all about the money. The reality is, the vast majority of fines and fees don't come to the city of Lotus. Uh, the vast, vast majority of it goes on through the state. It's how the state funds themselves, uh, courtesy us. Uh, but it's how we keep law and order in our areas and afford us the ability to be able to keep, uh, uh, keep our section of the world, uh, in order. Um, we get very little money from tickets, and quite honestly, it's my intention that, uh, hopefully, we have good actors on our behalf, and we can have thirty police officers and not give out a single ticket. That would be just fine with that, because we don't make a living on tickets. That's just a, this is a process, again, it's mostly pass-through, but just as a commentary on that.
But even the warnings do affect, so those get processed through our court system. So many warnings and so forth, do, they still have to be processed, yes, sir. So it's not just the tickets, it's the actual citations, but also the warnings that are given. And we do give a vast majority of warnings, you know, to let people know these are the rules, these are the, you know, different ordinances or traffic, um, legal things that need to be enforced within our city.
Okay, well, no additional conversation, we'll go ahead and pose that. At this time, we are going to uh, uh, journey into closed session, closed sessions in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultations with attorney. I, we'll, we'll be, uh, discussing items and opinions related to the solid waste and recycling services contract between the city, and if I waste services of Texas LP, the known as Republic. Uh, the time is, uh, eight thirty-four. Show return.
session, no decisions were made. It is nine ten as we resume.
No decisions were made. It is nine ten as we resume. With item number eighteen, looking for a motion and a second to discuss and take action on item number eighteen is written.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to discuss and take action on item number eighteen.
Motion by Massey, second by Sanders. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I am not interested in in acting on this resolution or approving it. We've had some some issues. I think there've been serious issues with especially with our brush pickup service. Especially now in this heat, the company is, we have certain dates that we're allowed to have our brush picked up on a monthly basis every other month and it's it's on a Thursday or a Wednesday or whatever day it is. We call, the citizens call in and they ask to be picked up. But the the thing is, they only send one brush, one truck or something. So the brush is not picked up on Thursday. It's not, say it's a Thursday, supposed to be on a Thursday. Thursday goes by, Friday goes by. Then the whole weekend goes by. And in this kind of weather, we've had, I know that in my subdivision, there's actually brush there from three weeks ago when it should have been picked up. And it is so dry and brittle that I'm afraid that we're going to have fire in our neighborhood. So it's become a safety issue, the lack of service that this company has has provided or is not provided to us. So I'm not interested in in paying extra money for service that is not up to par. And certainly nothing that that we've expected over the over the years. So that's how I feel. I am not going to vote on this resolution for this.
Councilmember Sanders.
So I got similar concerns specifically. So I'm pretty active in 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 my community, my part of the community that I live. And so I help a lot of the older people, at least initially when we transitioned to the new company. And we had a lot of phone problems and stuff. And it took a lot of effort. And I think a lot of the people sitting up here are pretty active in their community. And to get people to understand the system, the reservation system, which was really, really hard and it's a little bit of a challenge. And and so we thought everything was going to work out okay. And and now it seems like that process isn't being resourced, that people are waiting sometimes weeks. They get frustrated and then they lose confidence, not only in the service, they lose confidence assesses their city leaders, right? So I I'm really concerned about that. And then the whole indexing thing as well, that is, I think, part of the request by Republic to to ask for an increase. So I don't know. I'm not big business, but if you, if I was a business, I I think I would I would be a little concerned about asking for all of that when I know that my my performance with the community, my a new community that I'm servicing are frustrated and still don't feel like they're getting a hundred percent top notch quality service. And so so, yeah, I I I agree with the council member Massey that at this point in time, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't support this, this request.
Just going on the line, councilmember Jones.
Well, I've spent a lot of time and I think most citizens know that we serve on council as volunteers because we care about our city and I care about our citizens. And so on social media, I spent a lot of time the last six months, our city staff created communications department had flyers explaining it, private messaging people telling them with customer service rep to contact, contacting the city staff. I've spent a significant amount of time on this and I'm just going to be honest, I'm wary and I know our citizens are weary. And as soon as I think there's an improvement, then something else happened. And I was saddened to see this citizen come out for the beginning portion of the meeting to hear what had happened. Glad he came. I was not aware of that issue. So on that note, I think it's no surprise. I agree with my colleagues on this decision.
I'm not opposed to the increases, your cost adjustment and whatnot, not opposed to paying premium prices, but then I would expect premium service. I feel like that our residents and myself were getting subpar service, which don't warrant the increases. So I can't support this.
So this company inherited this contract and based on I I can't support it based on like all of the conversations I've had in my community. Nobody's really had a good experience with this company. And so that being said, what that is saying, right? So we had a certain expectation of how the service we had before, and this company is not meeting that level of service. So I agree with my colleagues up here. This is not something I can't support an eight percent rate increase.
To be fair, we have a representative, Tom, if you can join us there at the DIAS. One of the issues, and we've met several times, and I want to make sure that we're fair to your company as well, too. I think accurate representation is of the people we hear from. And often is the case, you only hear from the people that have problems, right? And and to be fair, I have been contacted and said you did a good job in a particular situation and whatnot. And it's a fair assumption that the people you don't hear from are fine. So I don't want, for those that are listening, saying that Republic is a terrible company because I think that's a mischaracterization, mischaracterization of of what I think is being said here. But we've had a number of meetings where the problems that have been just stated have been brought up as well as customer service, multiple numbers. Not, I don't want to use the word misleading, but a website that goes to a page for our pricing and it's the incorrect pricing or doesn't even have notice or doesn't even have their addresses listed. These are things that we've met and to be fair, progress has has been made in certain areas, but there are still phone system issues, customer service issues, people calling and looking for the brush pickup and then getting billed because well, you get billed for a pickup, but you know, the customer still is still not realizing that's part of our contract. And to be fair, this is not a contract that you bid on and and in or designed. It was designed by C six with a completely different system than what you have and you purchased out C six. And so I just kind of wanted to frame that all in there and say that there is a lot of difficulties and challenges that were put in your in your lap from day one and a lot of high expectations. And then how do we meet that? I don't think that there's a challenge to you continuing to to work and which, of course, would, doesn't sound like the cost, the council's in favor of approving cost increases, but that doesn't mean you don't get to continue the contract that puts things in 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 your lap to to return or just to continue on and take a look at next year. But I wanted to bring you up here just to be in full fairness to you and your company in case it was something you wanted to address or ask or explain or share.
Well, just, I feel like I should clarify a few things. And I walked into the meeting tonight about halfway through the the citizen to be heard segment. And my impression, and maybe I'm out of touch and not accurate in this, we've received very few complaints regarding trash pickup and recycling pickup. That's why I was surprised right when I walked in. I I I heard that and I walked outside with him and I'm going to be able to take care of his his issues. But my impression has been that the trash and recycling service has been pretty darn good. Very few issues on that side. However, on the bulk and brush side, it's been a very, very difficult transition for sure. This isn't a program that we designed and we negotiated. However, at the same time, we acquired the company, we acquired the contract. It's our responsibility to find a way to to make it work. So no excuses there. The problem that we're running into in all candor is the way that system is set up. Number one, it's much too complicated. It's too hard. I had an HOA where the board asked me to come out and speak to them about the bulk and brush program. And I had flyers for everybody. I explained it all and I asked him for questions. And the demographic of this group was a demographic that doesn't pick up their smartphone and make requests on online. And I walked out of there thinking, this is too hard. You know, it should be either you know what month your stuff is going to be or it's got to be more simple than this. The other communities that we service, we have two, three, four collection events per year and we do the bulk and brush at the same time. We're able to properly plan, properly staff for those events where what we're running into in Halodus is one week we will have twenty five requests for bulk and brush and the next week we have two hundred and eighty. And the week where we have these huge numbers of of requests, we just we can't, we certainly can't do it in Thursday in on in one day. What completely surprised me that I heard a couple of the council people say tonight is that bulk and brush was sitting out for three weeks at a time. That's, I wasn't aware of that, completely unacceptable. If we have a week where we have a large amount of request, number one, we communicated to Marion and her staff and we say, look, we got a ton of requests. It's going to take us a little bit, bear with us. However, all the feedback I'm getting from the operations department is yeah, taking us a while, but like three weeks. So that's some information that I can take back to to my team, team there. So that that was certainly surprising. Another issue that that we've had that I I agree with the feedback that I've heard from from council is on the the customer service side. We've made a change where we've gone from local customer service where in San Antonio, we had a department and we had ten agents and they took phone calls all day and they knew where Halodus was, you know? And now people call up and it's a call center, one's in Charlotte, one's in Indianapolis and another one's in in Phoenix and they barely know where San Antonio is, much less Halodus. So they do have a commu- a computer system that has everything in it. However, since the pandemic, we've had some staffing issues on that side and a number of calls coming in. And I think instead of the agent taking the time to sit down, go through it and be able to give specific, accurate information, they're just giving some general information out and it's led to some frustration on 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 the citizens' part. On the bulk and brush, I feel like both sides are set up for failure on that. We're never going to look good. The city's not going to look good and the residents are never going to be happy. What I proposed to Ms. Mendoza is let's take the time to sit down and it can't be me. It needs to be my general manager. It needs to be my operations manager, the guys that are the boots on the ground. Guys that can say, here's a system that will work for your community. I'm a sales guy and I'm going to look at it. You know, we met and you said, why can't we do it this way? And I said, well, that sounds great. So I take it back to the operations folks and they're like, we can't do that. There's no way that'll work logistically. So what what needs to happen is we need to get those folks in the same room with you, Mayor Whitehead, Marion and whoever else you you think would be adequate and hammer out a new plan that that's going to work. This current bulk and brush system isn't going to work. I apologize for the shortcomings and from what I've heard, I'm not surprised that the vote is going the the way that that it is. You have frustrated constituents and that's that's an issue and that makes it our issue. So I'm committed to this contract. I don't want to walk away from from this contract. I want to make it work. And I don't see any reason why it can't work. We service this city of shirts. We service the city of Sibyllo, Garden Ridge, Windcrest, Kirby, Curville. You know, we have twenty eight municipalities and they're all happy. So and and a lot of these have been, have come on board through acquisitions and we haven't struggled with them, but we've struggled here and I'm admitting that tonight. And you have my hundred percent apologies. I do apologize for for the issues. But I'm committed to getting it right. I think I can work with with your staff and we can fix this. And I thank you for your consideration on the on the the price increase request. I know it hasn't been voted on yet. I'm pretty confident how that's going to go. But anyway, that's that's it. I did want to clarify the issues. This this isn't a a system that that we designed and negotiated. We we acquired. Now, we acquired a company and that's part of it is you take on some some things out.
Well, I certainly appreciate your words. Like again, I'm not stating what the vote is going to be that'll be taking place here shortly. If it is approved, it's approved. If it's not approved, of course, that gives you the option if you want to default or if you want to continue on. I am more than happy. I think you have a reputable company and that you do obviously have provided great service throughout the nation. And happy to sit there and take a look at options. We have the option, correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, for Marion, that we can entertain an amendment to service, not, you know, not pricing, but when we take a look at service. If there's something that we can take a look at the brush and to amend pickup schedules, whether it's used to be every month or every other month or both on the same month or, you know, can address that, we can take a look at and bring to council for or at a future date if if the desire is to continue to work to solve what appears to be the vast majority of the problems does appear to be in the bulk and the and the brush. And so we'll entertain it. Again, that would, that option rests in in that case in in your in your lap. And but and of course, your opt out would require notice and there's six months there at that point. But at this point, I think what we'll do is go ahead and hold our vote. And I know if there's any other last minute comments.
I just have one comment. I know it's late. This is short. And you know, I'm just, as you're talking about being surprised about the three week period with brush. This goes back to your point of it's too complicated. There's that possibility. Again, this is unknown that that brush that's been sitting out are residents who never made a call for a reservation and then it got skipped. And so they're wondering where it is and you're like, it never got called in. It's not on our. So I I I'm, I want to be fair, just to highlight that.
Didn't even touch on on that part, but that that's another issue that we're faced with is we'll get calls from seventy five residents requesting pickup and we go out there and there's a hundred and fifty more. Now, originally, when when we started, we said, you know, if it's on the ground, we're just going to pick it up. Well, then we started not picking it up. And there's communication. I don't remember how we set that up, but there should be communication going to that resident saying you got to call in and and reserve it. But anyway.
There was certainly, and that's to the point which you said, that it makes you look bad, makes us look bad because of the the convoluted nature of the way.
And I know y'all are going to discuss this in some committee meeting or whatever, but the phone, the phoning in is just not working and it's not going to work. Even if it's just a, if you change the time, right now it's every other month and they still have to call in. One's a ball, one's it's just not going to work. Our citizens are not going to, there's going to be a few, it's just like life. There's going to be a few that are going to follow the directions and call in. And then all the other ones are going to look in. There's going to be several others that just, they see, oh, all the brush pickup day. They don't follow the rules. They don't even know what the rules are.
Have to be requested.
No, it shouldn't.
It should be set up in advance. This is when it's going to happen. And then if you have something that needs to be picked up and you're in between when And then if you have something that needs to be picked up and you're in between when your two services are, you can call, make a special arrangement for what we call out-of-cycle brush or bulk pickup. You pay 25 bucks and we come pick it up.
And that's a good thing because, you know, we had that big storm in April and a lot of trees went down. And we had dried brush in our backyard for, you know, at least a month and a half because we just barely missed the phone call. You know, I'm like, well, I missed it by a day and so there you go. So now I have two months of dried brush in my backyard. We finally got it pulled up. But, but when, but doesn't, does your company know? I mean, when we have a storm like that, I mean, when we have storms here, we have so many trees, a lot of old trees and they go down. Maybe they could be a little more proactive and get the word out there, hey, if you all need, you know, this is in-between pickup, but because it gets real dangerous. I'm telling you, when you have all these dead trees in your backyard that are dried up.
Yeah, and City of Fair Oaks Ranch is a good example. For this last freeze we had last winter, for whatever reason, they got creamed. And Bernie didn't even get it like they did. But we, they set up a program with us where we brought open tops out, put them out at the city yard and told folks they could come bring it out. And then others, they could bring it to the curb and we would, we just worked with them to get it taken care of. It ended up way bigger than anything we could handle and it ended up being so immense that a third party had to come in and pick that up. But whenever that happens, like a big hailstorm, something like that, tornado, God forbid, we can, we can work with the city and get those taken care of.
Right. Certainly appreciate the comments and at this point, we'll go. Way more, okay. So all in favor of approving, I'm number eighteen and approving the cost increase, say I. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion is denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out there.
I appreciate it.
At this point, we will adjourn the meeting. The time is nine thirty-two PM.
How do I get off?